This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Clerk. I forgot to ask for the recording to get started. I'll repeat myself. Today is Wednesday, May 26, 2021. I'd like to call this evening's City Council meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of our common sense, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, can I have the real call?
Councilmember Both?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin?
Absent and excused.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Councilmember Hale?
Here.
And Mayor Thornton?
Present. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Clerk, do we have any public comments for this evening's meeting?
Yes, there are three public comments. The first one, May 22, 2021, Nelda Perryman, 824 East Pioneer Loop, Le Center, Washington. Mayor and Council, I would like to know the dollar amount the city of Le Center has spent on backup coverage from Clark County Sheriff, Woodland PD, Ridgefield PD, or any other law enforcement agency to help support our police department since January 1, 2021. Thank you. I look forward to your reply, Nelda Perryman. The second one, Joanne Tucker, 1002 East 24th Circle, Le Center, Washington, 98629. Please provide me with the following information in a digital form. One, the TES New City Hall Building Financial Analyst Report prior to the purchase of this building, including purchase price. Two, a list of city functions to be moved to the new City Hall Building, a report on the cost impact of tenant improvements, and the cost impact from city vacated properties to move to the new space. Three, all bids for architect and engineering search concerning the new City Hall site from 2017 to 2021. Four, bids and invoices for all other work done on the new City Hall Building to date. Five, invoices for fees and studies to complete the construction. Thank you. And three, May 23, 2021, Joanne Tucker, 1002 East 24th Circle, Mayor and City Council. One, months ago at the City Council meeting, we learned that a survey would be sent out to the community regarding how we felt about the future of a police department in Le Center. Why was a survey never sent to us? Two, in March, the City Council stated they should find out how much outsourcing of the Le Center PD would cost. According to an email I received from interim Chief Richardson dated May 5, quote, "We only received a City Council direction last week to approach other agencies to determine the cost of contracting out..." "...cost of contracting out law enforcement services," unquote. Why wasn't something so important to the citizens of Le Center not researched before beginning the systematic elimination of the department? Now, please tell us what the cost will be. Thank you. I look forward to your reply, Joanne Tucker. And that is all.
Thank you, Clerk. Okay. I see a few more people have joined us this evening since the start of the meeting. So again, I just want to welcome everyone that's joined us. And I'm happy to see that we've got quite a few guests on this evening's City Council meeting. So, welcome. Next on the agenda is the Mayor's Report. I have just two items to share with the Council. First, a reminder that my next Mayor's Town Hall will be Thursday, June 3, at 5:30 p.m. This will be a virtual Town Hall as we've been having in the past, well, the past year and a half now. So just a reminder that I will be having that on June 3, and everybody is welcome to attend. You can find the link on the city website and right on the homepage, so it's very easy to find. And the other announcement I have this meeting is just a reminder that on Monday, May 31, the city offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day. And I just want to wish everyone a very safe and happy Memorial Day holiday. Well, that's all I have this evening for the Council. Is the Attorney's Report. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Since our last meeting, we've been quite busy with the Riverside Estates development. As you recall, the developer of that subdivision had his business placed into a receivership, or that project was placed into a receivership. And we've been working with the receiver who manages the property, the home builder for Phase 1, the receiver is essentially the developer for Phase 2, and then the Phase 3 multifamily developer. All those parties have been working on some revisions to the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. It's quite, still, it's quite similar to what you saw last summer, but now that the property's in the receivership, and we have maybe the same parties but with some different stakes, especially the Phase 1 home builder, all sort of negotiating the terms of that First Amendment. And I anticipate that we will be bringing that before Council on your June 9 meeting. The concept's still the same. It calls for the development of the Phase 4 park and what would have been these little pocket parks within the development. Instead of being developed as parks, they'll be developed and maintained as passive open space. And then there would be also the issues of parking back fee credits and refunds for the development of the Phase 4 park. It's a complicated process because it required the receiver to get court approval of the assumption by the receiver of the development agreement that was entered into in 2019. And so that did occur, and the court did order an adder, or enter an order approving that assumption. And the court will also have to approve the sale of the Phase 4 property to the city. So it's a little bit more time-consuming, a little bit slower, but progress is being made. And fingers crossed, we'll have that in front of you on June 9. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Bronson. Any questions for the City Attorney this evening, Council?
Hi, Bronson. It's Randy. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you, when do you see, based on what you're hearing from our governor, when we can return back to our regular meetings at City Hall?
It seems like the end of June, June 30, is a sort of a target date in the governor's office for trying to return things to, quote-unquote, "normal" or "open." So I haven't seen anything official saying public meetings can resume in-person meetings on that date, but that seems like it's a goal that the state is shooting for.
That'd be great. It'd be good to see everybody in person. Miss looking through the little lens here.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions for the City Attorney, Council? Okay. Thanks again, Bronson.
Sure.
So, next are Council comments. Councilmember Both?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. At the May CTRAN Board of Directors' meeting, it's a short meeting. Just a brief summary that I have for everyone. The board did pass a resolution of acknowledgements for a CTRAN employee who retired after 27 years with CTRAN. This was Larry Hamm. I think it's rather, it's a nice story. Larry started as a part-time bus operator back in 1994. And over the years, he worked his way up. He took on more and more responsibility and continued to receive promotions. And after 27 years, he retired as CTRAN Assistant System Manager. So I think that's really a great story. The board also approved a revised strategic priority matrix. The matrix is a document which includes five key elements which serve as guidelines for current and future performance objectives in projects. There was a revision of the 2018 to '20 matrix. When going to '21, there was a change there. It's rather involved, rather lengthy. And if you'd like to get into the details of it, I invite everyone who's listening in tonight to please send me an email to my city email, and I will be glad to give you the list of the before and after. The, excuse me, CEO Sean Donahue briefed the board on the status of the Interstate Bridge project. CTRAN is one of 16 working groups and participates in development and advisory capacities. CTRAN is a primary member of the State of Washington team, and CTRAN is a member along with WashDot and the city of Vancouver. Sean talked about current IBR activities that are occurring through the spring. It's primarily design options, updating design options, data collection, and community engagement. The IBR project is also involved with program changes. And I say changes, questioning and examining possible changes relative to the old CRC project. There was an article in the Columbia earlier this week indicating that the federal government has told CTRAN, or I should say, on the project, that if the new project deviates too much from the guidelines that were established with the old CRC project, that that could result in a requirement for additional environmental impact reports and some possible delay. The group is also working on defining critical objectives and opportunities. So it's very involved. A lot of people are involved with this, including the public. And we are working our way slowly toward hopefully getting a replacement for the Interstate 5 Bridge. And that's all I've got for tonight's report. And just like the mayor and others, I wish everyone a great three-day weekend. And I think it's important for all of us to remember what the true meaning of Memorial Day is. So, thank you. Have a nice...
Thank you, Doug. A good report. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo some of the same feeling that Councilmember Both mentioned. Please remember what Memorial Day weekend means, the true meaning of it, about our fallen Americans who've given all they have to keep our country what it is. Other than that, Mayor, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Servini?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would just like to wish everyone a very safe and joyful and memorable Memorial Weekend as well. It's always a very moving ceremony. If you can make it up to the service on Monday, I would encourage you to do so. I've seen a lot of families in the past that are there, and everyone walks away feeling a good part of the community and those that have served. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hale?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council and citizens of Le Center. Again, I echo the other council members regarding the Memorial Day. Be safe out there, and again, remember the importance of that day. I attended today, this afternoon, virtually the Port of Ridgefield Commission meeting. I want to give you just a couple of highlights on it. I've mentioned before the overpass over Pioneer Street. That's now been moved up a little bit earlier than before. They're gonna, they're hoping to have that open. That goes over the railroad tracks towards the launch area in Ridgefield, and that's in mid-October. They're shooting for that now. Ridgefield's got a lot of activity going on during the summertime. I won't go to all the dates because I'm looking for some more information that I'll pass on to the mayor and the council and the city. One is August 7. They call it the Battle for Life event using the dragon boats, which I think hold like 30-some paddlers. And then also, on the 5th of June, they're having the, called the Big Paddle. They have two boats there, and that's going to be a fundraiser. And then they're also doing a Raptors, if you know, that's our baseball, local baseball team, tailgating activity within the city. And they'll be doing, taking buses then to the game. And then finally, as far as activities, they're having a thing called Friday Night Flicks, July 9 through October 6. You'll go and sit in your car, or sit outside your car, but it'll be like going to a drive-in movie. So the sound will actually come through your car. They're talking about having some food vendors there, so you can come and get a meal. But it's also, they're planning to do that during the July-August time period. And then finally, on broadband, as this has been discussed, as you know, this is a big effort that's being done by the Port District, and they've just submitted another request of $1.8 million for CERB grant. And they're also working for, with the county, Clark County, on franchise activity for future companies that would come in and make that, get that fiber, dark fiber, out to the public. So that activity's going on. A lot of busy things going on. The meeting today lasted almost two hours. And this is, this final note here is for Doug. During our meeting, we had three trains go by with honking their whistles. So anyways, that's my meeting notes for today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. Okay, next on the agenda this evening, we have staff reports. We have three staff reports this evening. The first one will be the Finance Staff Report. That will be presented by the Manager of Administrative Services, Maria Swinger-Ensky. Maria?
Mayor and Councilmembers, the sales tax disbursement for April was just over $63,000 compared to $32,000 in 2020. And for staffing, we have a temporary office assistant helping out in finance during our time of transition. And we continue to evaluate payroll and AP processes and have determined much of that work can be folded into the work of the senior accountant and our customer service representative positions, and can be formed with better use of existing software. So we continue to evaluate that. As far as trainings go, I attended a training held by the Washington State Department of Retirement Systems entitled Retirement Reporting 101. And I also attended the Two-Day Labor Relations Institute hosted by AWC, and I participated in a class regarding federal award requirements sponsored by the Washington Finance Officers Association. Having received a large number of public records requests this year, we have created a new email address to help streamline the process. So all public records requests should be submitted to publicrecords@lcenter.wa.us. And the fee schedule for building and permitting has been updated. Staff spent over 40 hours preparing the system for the new schedule, and this included training on how to create fees and evaluations, adding new fees to the system, putting together processes for changing fees, and notifying and reeducating the builders on the new fee schedule. And the new fees cover a wide range of permits, whereas before the update, our system only set up the most basic permits. This combined with the new system setup will allow us to accurately record permit data in a precise manner. And so I want to thank Sarah Dollar and Jessica Nash for their hard work to update these fees in the system, as well as Matt Jenkins for overseeing the planning and organizing for the implementation of the new schedule. And then below is the gambling tax for the year. As you can see, a total of $93,000 has been generated, and of that, $31,000 has been received, and almost $62,000 deferred. So we do have one card room that has chosen to pay at this time, and one is deferring based on the agreement that we have. Thank you. And does anyone have any questions?
I'd just like to thank Maria and all of the staff that have been involved in getting all of these new processes implemented and the new schedule. I know how much time and effort it takes to get all of that work through, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Maria this evening, Council? Okay. Good report, Maria. Thank you very much. And I also would like to thank the city staff again for all their hard work in implementing the new fee schedules. That's been a tremendous project for the city, just a huge improvement from what we've had in the past, and it appears to be fully implemented now, and that's a great accomplishment. So I'm really thrilled to be able to report that that's been done. Very...
Mayor, this is, Doug, I'd like to ask Bronson a question relative to card rooms. And that is, do we have any idea, when the restrictions come off, will the card rooms be able to go back to 100%? Has there been any information on that?
There's a specific guidance from the governor's office on card rooms, and that guidance would have to be modified in order to go back to 100%. You know, I guess I would give you the same answers I gave earlier about open public meetings in person. And that is just sort of the, what I've been seeing from the governor's office and statements to the press of hopefully that June 30 timeframe for opening things up. But again, there's been nothing that's official, no modification of guidance. And it seems like the changes to the guidances come out within a day or two of them being effective. So we may not see anything until June 28, but, you know, hopefully that June 30 timeframe is what we'll see.
Okay. Well, let's hope for the best then. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So the next staff report we have this evening is from the, it's on the 2021 Stone Creek Drive Reconstruction Project Completion Report, and the city engineer, Mr. Tony Cooper, will be presenting to Council. Tony? So, Clerk, we're not able to hear Tony's report. Tony, are you muted? Yeah. Clerk, if you could please contact Tony and let him know that we're not able to hear him. And while you're doing that, I will move on to the next staff report, Community Development Staff Report with Mr. Jeff Swanson, our contract Community Development Director. Jeff, if you could give your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Thornton. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Swanson, I'm your Community Development Manager under a contract, and just have a few project updates to go through. So I'll do that. My scenery behind me is a little different this evening. I have some family staying with me, so if my report gets too boring, I can just lay back and go to sleep here. So the first project I want to talk about is number one, which is out on the east side of the city, and it's the Hung Lockwood Annexation. That 60% petition was approved by City Council last month, and the applicant has submitted for a pre-application conference. So they're beginning to go through the subdivision process with that site. Next one is Le Center Middle School. It's number three, across the road from that annexation. And there was an amendment to the sign code that was presented to the Planning Commission on May 11. And basically, what this is, is the schools use electronic reader...
This conference will now be recorded.
I promise I didn't do anything there.
You fell over and went back to sleep.
Yeah, I lied out, yeah.
I was a snooze button.
Apparently, I unplugged the internet when I did that, too. Sorry.
Okay, we lost being here for a while. Looks like we've all been able to reconnect, though. I was completely off for a little while. Jeff?
I'll try to pick it back up there, Mayor.
Okay, if you would, please. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think I was talking about the middle school and electronic code signs. And so the Le Center Middle School property, the zoning on the property is a sort of residential zoning, which doesn't allow for electronic reader board signs on it. The school has been proceeding through the development process, and so this was a miss somewhere on their end as they work through their building plans and getting things submitted to go through review. So what we're doing is we're amending the sign code to allow electronic reader board signs for public school properties. And then subsequently, what we will do is the underlying zoning, and Ethan will work on this, but either later in this year or early next year, the underlying zoning on that Le Center Middle School property will be changed to the public that currently exists on the other, on the other school properties. Sorry, I'm picking up some background noise here. I don't know if that's on my end or what's going on there. So anyway, that'll require a comp plan amendment, which requires going through the annual comp plan amendment process. And so we'll work with the school district to do that. The reason why we want to do that is we don't want the underlying zoning to remain residential and to count against our housing, our land, housing capacity. So we want the underlying zoning on all the properties to accurately reflect what those properties have been used for. The next project is number nine, which is in the northwest corner of the city, and that's Highland Terrace. On this one, the contractor installed the storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and the waterline utilities in Phase 1 of the project, and the contractor is beginning to grade the road for installation of curb and gutter. We issued a technically complete letter on April 23 and a notice of application on May 4 for tree mitigation on that site. Next one is Case Place, which is number 11, and a technically complete letter was sent on May 14. This is for the off-site wetland mitigation, and a notice of application and STIPA determination of nonsignificance was sent on May 18 for a post-decision review. So that's what's going on with that project. Bronson talked about Riverside Estates, and I don't have anything further to add than what he's already covered. So June 9 is when we anticipate bringing an amended development agreement for the Council for consideration and approval. Number 16 is Bellic Town Homes, and a building permit approval was issued on that project on May 6. So I think what'll happen there is that one will probably drop off of this project list next month since it's going to building. On number 18, the New City Hall project, contract and documents were sent to Swinerton. Plans for the vestibule were submitted to a structural reviewer for permitting, and we actually held a pre-construction meeting earlier this week for that project. So it's moving forward, and our city engineer, Tony Cooper, has been talking to the Department of Commerce because we have a 1.2 million-plus appropriation coming from Department of Commerce beginning, those funds will be available to the city beginning July 1 for this Those funds will be available to the city beginning July 1 for this project. And so we're working with them to understand all the different parameters around the the use of funds. The Shoreline Master Program, city council approved this on May 11th. It's your last meeting. The density code update was approved by council on April 28th. And fee schedule, just a quick update on that. The new building fees are set up in the system and have been implemented. And that was done on May 14th. So a few of these things are going to drop off the project list. And some other things will likely be added in the near future. So are there any questions about my report?
Okay.
I'm sorry, couldn't get the mute button up. Jeff, what's going on up at the junction with Minute?
They're still doing some, I think they have some plans under review for the hotel. They have, so one of the things that we do with some projects when they ask for it, if they want to pursue rather than a serial process where you do this step review and this step, if they want to indemnify the city, then we will enter into what's called a whole harmless agreement with them to allow for concurrent review of some things. So they're going through the site plan review process. And they've also submitted building plans for the hotel that are under review. So it's possible that there would be elements of the site plan that could alter, it could drive the need to alter the building plans. They've asked in short and timeframes that we review those two things concurrently. And so they've entered into a whole harmless agreement with the city that allows us to do that without assuming risk. So basically, if we come back and say, oh, your building plans are fine, but your site plan is not good. And you have to modify your building plans and modify your site plan. And this city is not responsible for all sort of cascading effects of correcting things. So they are they are proceeding through review process. My understanding is that they intend to be doing some site work up there.
What is their what is their current plan? I mean, we know about a hotel and then what revising the gas station or?
Yeah, so what they've submitted for there are four components of the project. And the first one that they intend to construct is the hotel. And that would be, you know, if you're looking at it from a north, south, east, west portions of the property, it would be the northeast corner of the property is where the hotel will sit. On the northwest corner, they intend to build a drive-through restaurant, fast food restaurant. On the southwest corner of the property, they intend to build some spec retail, multi-tenant spec retail gold. And on the southeast corner, they will put a convenience store. And then there will be, you know, fueling station associated with this development as well. It won't serve a big truck. It'll it'll be more of a retail type of fueling establishment. But the one that we have more certainty around right now because they've submitted plans and stuff for is that hotel. So that'll be the first piece to go.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff this evening, council?
Jeff, on the Case Place development, where are they proposing the off-site mitigation?
You know, I'm not sure exactly, Councilmember Servini. Typically, they use the the bank. I think it's the East Fork Bank Wetland Mitigation Bank. But I would have to verify that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your report, Jeff. So we will go back and see if Tony is able to present his report this evening. Again, he'll be giving us an update on the Stone Creek Drive Reconstruction Project Completion. Tony Cooper is our city engineer. Tony?
Oh, hi. Can everybody hear me now?
Yep, we hear you good now, Tony.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Mayor, City Council. Sorry about the, sorry about that. I'm on my phone, so it's a little bit more difficult. So this is a project completion report for the Stone Creek Drive Reconstruction. And just to go into a little background, on June 24th in 2020, city council approved the award of the Stone Creek Reconstruction Project in an amount of just over $471,000 to CAT Works. And previously, city council approved the budget of $580,000, and that was established by the engineer's estimate. So on August 10th of 2020, the contractor began construction of the project. And and on October 9th, 2020, a notice of substantial completion was issued to the subcontractor. So just to go into a little depth about what happened on the project. During excavation of the pavement and the base, the contractor and the city determined that the subgrade of of the aggregate base was very unstable and could not support construction vehicles or permanent vehicles without removal and replacement of of a rock base. So the city coordinated with Columbia West Engineering and to assess the the stabilization that would be necessary. So just to, you know, just a little background on the plans. Originally, the plan did have an over excavation section about two feet deep with ballast and geogrid through the intersection of Stone Creek. And that was about 160 foot length of of the road right there at the intersection. But the recommendation by Columbia West was to place the two-foot section of aggregate base along most of the length of the of the road and a three-foot base deep section in areas that were more unstable. So geogrid and fabric separation was placed along the entire length of the road between the subgrade and the new and the new base. So city staff used a steel soil probe to along the entire length of the Stone Creek Drive to determine the areas that a two-foot deep base section and a three-foot deep base section would be necessary to use for the subgrade stabilization. So what what the city found, what Columbia West and the city found is that there were some areas that there was peat and along some of it, and and there was a substantial area of the road that was very unstable clay that produced no support to the traffic. Subsurface drainage piping and drain rock, a drain rock trench was installed along the length of Stone Creek from just north of Fifth Street to just about four, almost down to Fourth Street, just north of the north, north of that in the catch basin there. And so change orders were necessary to remove all this unstable base and place subgrade rock in the geogrid. The extra cost of the change orders to stabilize Stone Creek Drive was is 200, just over $209,000, 209,942. During construction, there was also water service connection to from the water main there in the in the road that was leaking and broke and flooded the trench. So Park Public Utilities fixed the water line and agreed to pay for the change order for just over $4,300 for the contractor to stand by time waiting for them to fix it. So the total cost of the project with the change orders is $662,046 without the water line break. The difference between the construction cost and the original budget is $82,046. And that's that's the $662,046 minus the $580,000 budget. So this 800, $82,046 is the amount over the original budget approved by city council. So just to talk about the budget impact, in November 2020, the capital project budget was presented to city council. The budget, this budget included $685,000 in the capital budget to fund the Stone Creek Reconstruction Project, which included the additional subgrade stabilization. And that was coordinated with Paul Lewis, as I recall, about that, you know, for that for that budget. The budget change. So the funding of $662,046 will be paid for by refunding in addition to the original capital project budget. So are there any questions that council has?
Tony, this is Dennis. So are we pleased with how that turned out? Did we have some issues shortly after that completion that was mitigated by the city?
Well, so there was a couple, there was, I think, when it started to rain really hard, there was one little area just north of of the Fifth Street intersection where there was a about three by three by three section where there a little bit of water was coming out, weeping through the pavement a little bit. But that was the only place. But what I what I found was I I watched this during the winter and determined what was happening. And it looked like that during heavy rainstorms, about two or three days of constant rain, there is a small area that that weeps a little bit. Now, it's unfortunate, you know, I don't like to see any any groundwater anywhere coming up. But this was a small area. What happened was it looked like when it came out, it it drained down to the cleanout of the of the trench drain, and it would drain down into the trench drain and get into the perforated pipe. So I did I did kind of watch what was happening. And I pulled the catch basin rims that were connect that connected to this perforated pipe. And it those perforated pipes are constantly draining groundwater. It's it's streaming into those catch basins. There's one connection at the intersection of Stone Creek and Fifth, just on the south side, that it that has perforated pipe through the intersection. And that one is it's it drains pretty rapidly. And then there's another one where the pipe, the trench drain and the the perforate pipe on the on the west side of the road, about three feet down from the pavement grade. It connects to the catch basin just north of Fourth Street. And and it's it's draining groundwater constantly. So it is working, you know. And so I think what there's probably unlikely that anything's going to happen to this road in the future because it has about two or three feet of deep a base with geogrid stabilization. And it has it has the drain there. So it it seems to be working all right. There was a little hump that formed also just north of Fourth Street on Stone Creek. And it turned out we I had the contractor just cut a little pavement section out. We found out that there was there's clay dams that were putting in there to keep the water into in the perforated pipe. And that was a recommendation by the Geotech. Well, one of them was it was pretty close to the pavement or the pavement subgrade. And so it expanded a little bit, created a hump. So that was easily fixed. It was just excavating down a little bit, taking out some of that bentonite clay dam and then replacing it. But other than that, that that's all it seems to be very stable now. I remember during construction, when they opened this, they they took out that pavement, trucks were getting the the construction vehicles were getting almost stuck because the grade was so unstable and pumping, and it was just really hard to even maneuver on it. And so following that, all the replacement of that that rock, it's actually a three-inch minus rock subgrade. It it the construction vehicles are, there was no issues at all with all the construction vehicles and water trucks. And so it's very stable now. So I I think it in the end, it's it's a good product. And so I don't think anything's going to happen. I can't anticipate anything. But, you know, it just looks very, very promising now.
Not to belabor this, but just question, when we have that, a contractor come in and do that kind of a work, does that come with some kind of guarantee of some sort on workmanship for that?
Well, it does on workmanship. Yes, Dennis, it does on workmanship. And that's usually for a year. It's it's workmanship. It's not it's not on on design. But on workmanship, if there's something that that they that is is it the fault of the contractor, then yes, they need to fix it.
Okay.
So, yeah, 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 if anything happens based on something that happened to the pavement, you know, they're they're liable for it. So there is there is again, guarantee for that. But, you know, it's the issue was the groundwater, and that's been happening for years. So, you know, it's how to deal, how to drain that groundwater and and to support the the grade with, you know, with with an adequate structural section.
Tony, great job, and thank you for all your work on that. And on the who live on that on that street, I know they're very appreciative of all that's been done there. Thank you.
Any other questions for the city engineer this evening on this project? Okay, thank you, Tony. Good report. So that that concludes our meeting for this evening, council. And so at 7:18 at this time, could I get a motion to adjourn?
No, move. I moved to insurance.
Second?
It's been moved in second to adjourn this evening's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion case. Thank you, council. Have a good evening, everyone.